Let's do it again. Dillows my fucking hair! Dillows with my fucking hair!
I'm sorry.
Wow, that's very different piece than what I left you with. You go hard. Well, the million dollar question is A or B?
I I don't know what's happening in the second one.
Okay. That's fair.
But I missed the beginning, so I don't know where the picture came from and it didn't seem to be a picture anymore.
It's a picture, just a very big one.
Right.
Bigger from my mind versus.
But I don't know what the thing at the end is.
Oh, you don't know where the second picture.
Yeah, I don't know where that's coming from.
Same place the rope and the magic. Yeah.
I don't know the I mean it's a choice.
Um, I hate the rodeo.
Yeah, that's fair.
No, it's um
Fair.
That's fair.
I've been trying to generate a need to go out to the audience for my new love. Uh, or been trying to find, I like the idea of discovering a new picture that is of the audience and then trying to find that person out there.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Um, like divine intervention, don't kill yourself. Um, but I don't know where I get it from, I don't know where the magic comes from. The best I've got so far is it falls out of the sky.
Right.
What about getting a picture of them?
Right, which doesn't read.
Right.
What about getting a picture of them on your song?
What if um What if um What if the what if you don't fall in love with one auditor, you fall in love with two? What if you fall in love with somebody immediately and they'll play with you, say and kill yourself, but you don't succeed and then you realize you fall in love with another auditor?
Too much stuff.
Too much.
Yeah, I'm trying to cut shit out.
Okay.
I'm trying to cut shit out so I can act more.
Right. Um, okay.
Um. You wanna see it again?
I don't my my thing is
Mm-hmm.
your need to go to the audience didn't come from the lasso before, the lasso was a vehicle.
Yeah, but I couldn't find the need, I was really struggling with it.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that was one of my problems is I was really struggling with it.
Hmm.
Um.
Yeah.
Peace out. Nonsense. Peace, peace, peace. Um, so I don't know. I I was trying to strengthen that connection.
Do I? Right.
And eliminate the lasso bit which just doesn't do anything right now.
Right.
Um, I don't know what it is.
Is it a matter of not liking the lasso bit or is it a matter of not trusting the audience, being a saint their way on the stage?
Um, it's a matter of the lasso bit is the mushiest part of the whole thing. My rope mine is not the cleanest and so I mean it just
You wanna play your strengths for certification?
Yeah, yeah, it's it's basically, yeah, I could it 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 works, but it's definitely like Hmm. Um, I also went and had lunch with Pat Tyler today.
It it it's also the part that that we never really got to because we spent so much time combing up the first part.
Yes. Yes.
There is that.
Yes.
Um but I'm not here to convince you to ignore any one thing or any other thing.
No, absolutely.
I'm here to tell you what I saw.
Yeah.
Um.
If you really liked what I saw here a little bit of like the business on the chair.
Uh-huh.
It's so nice. It is so clean, it is I mean it's extending beyond the point where it was before, but you're doing so much good, clean, sharp stuff.
Right.
That feels, I'm like I'm there with you the whole time.
I feel like I'm starting to motivate that first end now by kinda cutting out some of the action and going past the ominous.
Hmm.
Um just try to find out the last act. I don't know what the last act is.
Right.
I mean, it's the same problem as the rodeo, I think the first act is better now.
Right.
Yeah.
I think. I like what I'm doing with the first act better.
The my only issue is that you really wanna go to the audience, but you're not
connecting to what I'm doing.
finding that connect that connection and I don't know that that
Right at the end there.
going over and going over and going over the beginning section or lengthening the beginning section is gonna help you find the audience.
No.
Um, I don't know how to I don't know how to find the audience either right now.
Hmm.
Um, just because I just jumped back in.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, um, and I can't stay up too late tonight.
That's fine, I need to go to bed too.
Yeah, but
I was gonna work till ten and then Jonika showed up like fifteen minutes ago and I was like yay and then you guys just got home, so.
But I can contemplate and come up with ideas for you tomorrow while I'm at work.
Yeah, and tomorrow uh, Pat Tyler's gonna give me an hour of her time and she's a trendsetter.
It's amazing.
Yeah, so.
I will warn you, the one thing I noticed this time, your facial expressions are bigger, which is awesome, but they didn't always make sense to me.
Okay.
Um, you flip uh, there were a couple times where you flipped back and forth between some of them.
Mm-hmm.
But there wasn't any action happening that I can understand why that sort of happened.
Okay. Okay, so I need to
Yeah, every change of emotion has to be paired with the with an action, I think.
With an action or 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 it needs to have its
Yeah. Or a thing. And there needs to be a thing.
Or it needs to take its space, yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah.
It can't be a flash of this and then back to the other thing.
I like your picture, I like that it's a much bigger picture, I think you can be more crisp with the folding.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And I think if you think of it, because it's a very smooth unfolding now, but you need a teeny bit of echo on each of those folds, so you need to go boop, yeah, crisp, yeah. Yep.
Hmm.
Right, exactly, yeah. Yes, yeah, yeah.
I love that beat.
Yeah, yeah, so just crisp up those picture foldings.
Yeah. And I think before the tearing going down and then angry and then happy actually makes it make sense.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, and if you're taking more time to get onto the chair, I think then
Yeah.
I got I got lost with the rope.
Okay.
Because you take it, you take the time to go like this and check it over here.
Mm-hmm.
Right before you jump, but then the noose I think came from closer to you when you picked up the noose.
Okay.
Just make sure they're coming from the same plane.
Same place, yeah.
Yeah.
Um that was a what moment, um, uh
Yeah.
But the tugging on it, the tugging on it clarified it, so you know, don't stress over it.
Right.
But it can be clearer.
Clearer, yeah.
Um and um, oh, coming off, uh, I I didn't understand the tugging here and then tugging here in itself?
Tugging on the other side of the beam. It's not tied right, so if I pull here
Yeah, I got it.
it comes over. It doesn't
I think you can clarify that if you go
Okay, I'm trying to clarify that action, but I don't know how, yes, thank you.
But Yes, I think you can clarify that by by going like this. Uh, i- if you do that, one, you absolutely cannot grab that rope and go like this while you're on the chair because you're checking to make sure that it's tied.
I'm checking to make sure it's tight.
That was
I'm pulling on the other end of the rope and pulling myself up, but I never tie it to the goddamn beam.
Yeah.
Okay.
I throw it over.
Uh-huh.
I get up here, I pull on the other end, but it's dangling over the beam is the fiction I'm playing with.
Oh. Okay, but I think what you might need to do is hold it here because you're not trying to choke yourself yet, hold it here and hold this and and then do it so that it's clear.
Hmm.
Right.
I've got two ropes and they're over a beam and these two things are directly related.
Yeah.
Playing the pulley game, yeah.
Right, yeah, you're you're showing us the pulley in that motion and then
Yeah. When I come down.
when you come out, you do the same thing, it's
Dink.
that's tight and then you already have your hand here.
Yup.
So you can bring this one over and
Pull and pull the whole thing down on top of you.
Oh, yeah. Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that'll clarify.
Yeah.
Are you recording?
Yeah.
Cool. Um, thought I had when we were talking about finding the audience, um, and this is less of a action thing as once again, I bring up cool reading and whoever's reacting the best.
Yes.
Right.
you're going to them in however you're finding them.
Yes. Yes.
And it might just be the fact that they're reacting
Right.
is enough to draw you to them in your business.
It's true, they're friendly and blah, blah, blah. It's just
You can also try and make a connection with someone when you come in.
Mm-hmm.
To sit down on the chair.
Yeah.
When you first come in, you can make a connection and maybe you can show that person the picture of your love.
That's hard.
Instead of just kissing it yourself. Or I don't know, make a make a heart, I don't know, I don't know if there's any way to really do that, but
Turn away. I I I I think that's too much realism.
But if there's something
I think that's too much realism, it has to come from a
But if something, right, but if there's something else that you can do to make a connection with somebody before you kill yourself.
Yeah.
And before you take out the picture so that they forget that they had that you had that connection.
Right. Right.
Then you might be able to find it easier later.
Yeah.
But it has to be before the picture because that that connection has to be forgotten until it comes back.
Right, and 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 the need I'm trying to find is okay, so I'm sharing my suicide with you.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
And I'm really clarifying this with, you know, I come on, I put this fucking down, I'm anxious about what I'm about to do.
Mm-hmm.
I don't go to leave and spin around, I wait here for a second and I'm like, okay, let me explain you this. Okay, there's this thing.
Yeah.
Alright, let's show it and you know, whatever.
Yeah, picture.
Uh 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 uh, I'm here to do this thing. I'm here to do this thing, here's the reason why I'm doing this thing, goddamn this thing, fuck it. Okay, gotta do it right, oh shit, I'm about to fuck up, I'm just such a screw up. Okay, now it's good, let me go and grab this for you guys, yeah, and then, you know, and now I'm ready to kill myself. I don't know what the emotional space going up here is.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I don't know if it looks unclear, but I'm unclear about
It is.
my attitude towards
Yeah.
the moment of hanging.
Yeah.
Um this is, you know, good news.
Yes.
Um, I if I can time it, it's actually great if this is boop boop
Yes.
boop boop Joe.
Yeah.
Um and then it's a I'm trying to get to the I'm so sad still here so that we can play the sad to confused.
If you get if if
Mm-hmm.
if you can find a connection with the audience in this isn't the first time that you've tried to do this and failed.
Okay.
Like if you have that reality in your brain, what you can play with after you fail is damn it, every single time. I don't know how to get that across, but if you can, damn it.
I mean, it could just be that.
Well, now what? Hey, you're pretty.
Did I shoot you now?
Hold on. Crazy idea. Hey you, you can help me kill myself.
Okay.
Is that too much?
Not necessarily. It's gotta go somewhere.
Right.
Um
If you pick up the end of the rope and hand it to one of the auditors and then try to run away. Just put it in their hand and be like make them hold it and then and then as soon as they have it, just run the opposite direction and clothesline yourself.
It's a bit of a different ending than what you had before. Speed. Okay, that works.
That's unclear, I think it has to be, I think it has to be above your head, so it has to be pull, pull, this doesn't move, this stays above your head where we can see it and grab the rope above it and go doo doo.
Yeah.
You go doo doo and I think it, I think you're gonna have to make it fall in front of you. Yeah, like, uh, maybe if you yank it like
Tug tug.
maybe you yank it like like this and it comes forward and falls on your feet there.
It's tug tug moment, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Tug tug, it's rolling and it comes down.
Then you get upset and then you pick up the end of the rope, however you pick it up, however you get that thing, find the end of it. Shove it into someone's hand. And clothesline. Why is that so fun?
Cause it's a mime rope clotheslining a person.
No, that's straight up funny.
It's like my fall, it's a great fall.
That worked?
That worked.
Okay.
You could use a little
Cause this cause this cause that fall is nice, cause I'm looking over my shoulder. Oh, holy crap, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
And you're doing it so quickly, he's not even gonna realize what's happening.
I have I have a solution for that. So grab, grab, tug, tug.
Don't give him time, I don't think you need to give him time, you just run up to him, put it in his hand.
Just grab and put it in his hand, put it in his hand.
Um, maybe a slow motion thing as I'm falling, but that's not funny, is it?
No, it's not.
That is funny.
Cause it isn't too much sense.
No, it's it's you need to see at the moment, it gives him too much time to figure it out, yeah.
Yeah.
Now how much how much other time do you have to play this stuff back for?
Give yourself give yourself time to think about what to do next and what to try next.
Yeah.
But once you decide what to do with no anger, go and with a pure heart, go over to this person and hand him the other rope. This person needs to have no idea what you plan to do.
Yes.
Uh, cause they won't be complicit in a suicide.
No.
Um
Well, they also won't be successful, it is certain.
I don't know where to go from there though.
I don't know, but I wanna see where it falls generally in the music, can I have one? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm thank you very much.
Hey, that's a leak up. I just stole a cigarette from Nick.
I'm gonna, or shall we just leave that open?
We just found something hilarious!
Do you wanna see it? Oh, that's right, the windows open. I'm gonna finish this thing, fuck. Would you like to see what we got? Would you like to see it?
I don't know, the music or you just wanna?
Can just show Alika the bit.
I think if we can find more of those things.
Yes.
Uh, then
And fucking make it
then you don't necessarily have to take so long to get to the chair, but you can really clean that up.
Yeah.
So you don't have to feel like you have to fill all of this space with it to to cut out the lasso, we can find a couple of other tricks
Right.
to do, I just
Do I look like an X-Man?
And I think after
Do I look like converted Wolverine?
I think after three, cause three is the magic number, you just give up and go home.
Yeah.
Take your chair and go home.
Yeah. Cause I I liked the lasso
I'm just gonna vent to the sides of leaking.
I liked the lasso thing, but losing the lasso thing makes the ending you want better, not as good, yeah.
I know you love the audience.
I love the audience.
And you wanna be able to show that you can react to the audience, but I think but I think um
Yes. I need to, I I need to show that I can manipulate the audience because I feel like that's
I think you can react with interact with them without being in in love with them in this one, I think you can play that for something else, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's better, really.
Yeah, yeah, instead of having to change modes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just, this is great, this is this is a game I can play with them.
Yeah.
Because now there's another problem, I handed them the rope, they have the rope, there is the beam, there is me.
It's already
The rope has to go through the goddamn
You can try to jump over the beams, you can be like
No, it's already come down from the beam, once you give it to the audience.
Yeah, it fell down from the beam.
Yeah.
But he's saying that you can try to jump
So now it's not going over the beam, so I can't get on the chair and jump because they're holding the end and there's no pulley.
Right, but but
Right, so we're just gonna clothesline ourselves.
Well, it's probably gonna have to go somewhere from there.
I think you're gonna have to try a different tactic.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you maybe before you give them the rope
Trying to kill myself by clotheslining myself, hey.
Maybe before you give them the rope, maybe before you give them the rope, you you go and you can't do it yourself.
Maybe the
And you have to watch because if he lets go
I can't, I I I slam into the back curtain.
You can't Yes, you do, yes, you do, and so you have to have that look behind, make sure he's still going.
Um Yes, that's why I was trying to figure out how to fall where I can look behind, yes.
Yes, yes.
Maybe the clotheslining is your exit. Uh, and maybe the handing is like your last bit.
Timing, depends on the timing.
A little It depends on the timing, but
Yeah, and I would recommend if you have other people in the room, definitely pick not an auditor for that.
Yes, yes. Definitely.
I think I interrupted you.
Um, yeah, because I mean like like you're talking about multiple attempts here.
Yeah.
Uh increasing in rapidity towards the towards the end of the piece. Uh, you're giving up, here, you take the fucking rope and just go to walk up, storm up, here, you take it. Grab their hand.
You can't kill me.
I'm already dead.
Don't hit me, I'll hit me.
We just need to find one more rope gimmick.
Yeah. It's funny. Clotheslining is funny.
I actually clotheslined myself today. I'm gonna close up and I think
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the good thing is I'm hearing that people have already figured out who to play with you.
Oh
Yes.
Did you see my note? I left uh, I got those chairs at Target, they were $10, they're clearance, they're
Yeah.
Nice.
They're all There are six different colors.
It's green. Oh, how cute, we should all go and get them. They're all on clearance.
Can we sit fit fit six chairs back down?
We can fit a couple more, we've got the two chairs out there, we can get two more and have enough for six people. And then if we have company over, we can bring the rest of them out. Do they stack?
Yeah.
Will they stack, then it's no problem, yeah.
Nice, no problem.
They stack.
You're stuck. Okay.
Why did you
Alright, it's gone. Is it in your tongue tongue mouth?
Just if I can get it to me. Okay.
You just wanna like improve the last bits?
Yeah.
Try shit until something works?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, can you go back?
Um
Hmm. Something.
Yeah.
I like the moment of
Are your feet okay? Okay.
That actually helped make my uh contact with the ground much softer by dispersing force into the door. That actually helped make my, uh, contact with the ground much softer by dispersing force into the door. It made a lot of noise.
Let's, let's sleep on different ways to kill yourself.
How to kill your wife! Okay.
Got an idea.
Uh-huh.
Um, what about a, so three attempts, one of these things is not like the other. Fuck ropes, at in that last kind of, mm, of this song, just
Succeeding at suicide's not necessarily fun.
Right. I think it's, I think it's funny if you try three times and you fail three times, and you say, oh, fuck it.
And give up. Yeah.
I wonder if you could I wonder if you could try physically, try to
Beat myself to death, 'cause there's really only so much you can do with a rope, I think.
Like, like with the picture, before you even go get the rope, like I don't know, like you know.
Sleep on it.
Yeah.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you, sir.
If they let go of the rope the first time.
Uh-huh.
And you run into the back wall.
That's easy.
You just pick it back up and give it to someone else.
Someone else. Hold it, yes.
Get their hands around it and make sure it's real tight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Make sure they got it.
They got it.
Remember. So that's easy.
Yeah. They let go, it's great.
I'm gonna put your nose clothesline, alright, goodnight, Bora.
Goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight, you guys.